And you're on.
Okay, we'll open the meeting at 6:30. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Winchester?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Burton?
Here.
Ruth?
Here.
Collins?
Yes. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Winchester, is there support?
Support.
Support by Burton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda, all items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial. They do not require discussion by the township board and they will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion. If discussion is desired on an item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will automatically be moved to the last item under new business.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Support. Motion by Winchester, support by Ruth. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, never mind, that's gotta be roll call, we're gonna pay some bills.
Winchester?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Burton?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes. Motion carries, five zero. Now, we go to public hearings, of which we have none, that leads us to presentations, and introduce the Holly Township Auditor. Step up to the mic and give us your name.
Thanks for having me, my name is Tyler Baker.
Bring it up. There you go.
Alright, hopefully that's better. Uh, my name's Tyler Baker, I'm a senior manager at Maynard Costerston, uh, we perform the audit for Holly Township, uh, and tonight, we're here to present the 630 of 23 audit. In front of you, you should have a bound report with a couple of letters, um, that we will go over here, over the next couple of minutes, if at any point you guys have questions, feel free to raise your hand, yell out, and, uh, we'll make sure to answer those at that time. Um, first off, I wanna thank Karen, and Jen, and George, and all of their team, um, at the township, it was overall a smooth audit process, which is always appreciative, um, they were available to us, responsive, uh, which is always, um, appreciative to us, and I think the board also, um, likes to hear that as well. Um, so again, this is as of 6:30, um, so without further ado, we will, um, get started. Uh, we're gonna go through the bound report first. Um, so if I can have you turn to page one, um, as noted at the bottom of the pages, uh, pages one and two are our, um, audit report, um, and, uh, these are the only two pages that are that of the auditors, the rest of these are that of the township, and you'll note at the top, uh, opinions, the second paragraph states, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects." It's a lot of words to basically say it's a clean or an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that us as, um, independent auditors can provide on a set of financial statements, um, basically saying that these financials are in accordance with GAAP, which is consistent with previous years, but is important. If I can have you flip to page three. So this starts what's known as the management discussion analysis, so this is, uh, basically word version of a lot of what occurred during the year, uh, and one important part is this the only place that shows comparative in governmental set of financial statements, it's kind of a unique aspect to governmental financial statements, um, and towards the bottom of that page, uh, you can see comparative between 22 and 23, uh, in regards to the balance sheet, and this is the full accrual, which would include items of long-term nature, um, including any debt, fixed assets are included in this schedule, um, which is in contrast to further back in the statements, which we'll look at. A few items of note here, you'll notice total assets increased approximately 267,000. In addition, you can see that the current and other assets decreased, capital assets increased, that's mainly due to capital outlay that was incurred during the year, uh, in regards to some land, um, Township Hall, and then some barn and farmstead improvements also during the period, so that's the main increase for that capital assets, uh, from 22 to 23. Total liabilities increased from 635,000 to 721,000, most of that is the increase in that other liabilities line item, which includes deferred revenue from a grant during that year, uh, that was received right before year, and so expenses hadn't occurred, which is that increase, so purely due to timing of recognizing those, um, revenues. If I can have you flip to page four, which is just on the back of the next page, this is comparative, uh, for an income statement, if you will, um, the main item we'll talk here is total revenues decreased from 3.5 million to 2.4 million, or approximately a decrease of 990,000. You'll notice the second line down from the top, operating grants and contributions decreased from 1.1 to 80,000, that's mainly due to contributions received in 22 in regards to, uh, barn and farmstead that were recognized, as well as ARPA was recognized in 2022, um, as well, um, and fully recognized then, so you don't have that revenue in 23, so that's the main cause for that, um, that variance from the prior year. Expenses increased 458,000, um, from 1.8 to 2.3, um, that's due to two or three different things, that's due to contracted accounts that were expended during 23, um, not necessarily during the audit, but were incurred during 2023, um, that did not occur during, um, 630 of 22, you have some, um, increases in wages and related fulfilled positions, and then you also got an additional, uh, knock for contribution that are included in that amount as well, so that's what makes up that increase of approximately 500,000. Page 12, a couple pages forward here. So this is where we get to a little more of what you guys are used to seeing from a board's perspective, which does not include items of long-term nature, uh, this is the current resource model, um, as, in regards to governmental funds, so you'll notice at the top there, page 12, you have, um, all of your funds, uh, four of which being major, you got your general fund, fire and emergency, capital projects, specifically farmstead capital projects, and then the billing department. As you go down three lines from the bottom, you can see the net change in fund balance, um, in total, um, the, for, in regards to the general fund, the general fund decreased approximately 1.6 million, um, the, the direct driver of that is transfer of funds to the capital projects funds, which is where those capital outlay mainly came out of, um, so without that, the general fund maintained, um, fund balance right around, uh, breaking zero, give or take, uh, you have the fire and emergency fund, which increased 68,000, um, your capital projects fund remained consistent overall, uh, mainly due to the expenditures being funded via the transfers from the general fund, and then you got the farmstead, which decreased 132,000, mainly due to, um, the use of the previous contributions, uh, in the prior year, which is why you have those expenditures in the current year with minimal revenue. Overall, for a, um, for a township decrease in fund balance of 1.7 million, again, purely driven by those capital outlay, uh, purchases in the fiscal year. Page 16 starts our notes to the financial statements, there are not a ton changes, uh, to the notes, so, um, I'm not gonna go one by one, so, which is, which is nice, they're consistent from year to year, but I will have you flip to page 28, um, which gives, just gives a synopsis of the OPEB plan, uh, from year to year, um, overall, not a, not a lot of, um, changes overall, um, as of 630 of 23, um, there is an OPEB liability of $2,600, essentially, um, saying that the OPEB plan is, is fully funded, uh, which is consistent with previous years, and what you'll see is slight changes in assumptions from year to year potentially, um, or changes in investment returns as the market goes up and down, but overall, the township has been fiscally responsible in regards to that OPEB plan, and fully funded it, and then continues to monitor it from, um, year to year. And again, that's valued on the alternative measurement method, which I think we discussed, uh, prior year also, and that, and that continues, continues in the current year, so. Page 34. Here is the budget to actual in regards to the general fund, so I won't speak too much on the actual, as that's essentially what we, that is what we discussed a few pages prior, but I do think is a good schedule, um, to dictate the, it shows the original in that first column, uh, budget approval, you got your final, but, final budget, actual expenses, and then the variance overall on that far right. Three lines up from the bottom, the final budget approval was a net decrease of $0, um, actual being because of the capital outlay at year end, causing the general fund to decrease that 1.6 million, um, basically, that's caused from within that other financing sources, you have the transfer ins and transfer outs, and the transfer in did not occur in the current year, as the general fund was funding that, uh, capital outlay purchase, um, as it currently sits, so that's the main driver in regards to the general fund, uh, budget to actual. Any questions in regards to numbers as they currently show for the pages we've discussed? Perfect. Um, that is it for the bound report, for right now, um, you should have two, uh, letters in front of you, um, we will start with the one that says, "In planning and performing our audit," um, at the first sentence there, so this is what's known as our internal control letter, so as we go through our audit process, if anything comes of note that we wanted to make the board aware of, um, this is where those items, um, get reported. Overall, there's two items in there, I'm not gonna read it word for word, um, they are in regards to some processes from a, a physical indication of review, not that a review isn't being taken, but the documentation of that review, a lot of which is due to just continuation of positions not necessarily being consistently filled, um, and so I, I think, as, with both of these items, as we move towards next year, and what we were seeing during the time of audit, I think both of these, uh, findings will be cleared and will no longer be there, um, in, in future years, um, from what we were seeing during the time of audit. The second one is in regards to check, register, and sequence, again, a lot of those items we noted were at the beginning of the fiscal year, when not all positions were filled, towards the end of the fiscal year, there, those items were not of note as much, but we still wanted to bring it to the board, and in future years, don't anticipate that being, um, an item of note for the board, but again, um, if anything comes up through that process, we'll let the, the board be aware of that. The second letter here is our required communication with the board, or what's called our governance letter, uh, this is a boilerplate letter, which is exactly what the board wants to have in this letter, um, I'll let you guys read this, um, as your leisure, uh, tonight, but basically, it discusses estimates in the financial statements, which are required to be disclosed to the board, useful lives, um, the OPEB valuation, um, items of that note, if we had any difficulties encountered during performing the audit, if we requested documents, they weren't provided to us, we asked questions, we didn't have adequate answers, anything like that, we would note it in this letter, we didn't have any of such, um, issues noted, which is, which is what the board would like to, to see in this letter as well, so, um, that's a fun read, so.
Yeah.
A lot of words to, to say, we didn't have any issues noted during, during the audit, so, um, that's all I have for you guys, um, again, I appreciate you guys' opportunity, um, to be of service to the township and to present, um, tonight, any questions?
What do you say when the fund, the total balance is less than zero? Cause it's always been positive.
You're saying the, the fund, when it, when it decreases, when the fund balance decreases?
No, when the, the total net asset is not good.
That's not the situation here, he's saying...
Oh, he's saying in general, those are not as, those are not as fun.
You had him worried, he was trying to...
I got you, I was like, what? Man, I must have misspoken, um, those are not as fun.
Okay.
Um, these are much more enjoyable when an entity is fiscally responsible, uh, and has a plan, and isn't necessarily looking, uh, in arrears, um, which you guys, which you guys seem to have, which I think are much more enjoyable conversations, that's for sure.
Sir, I wanna say, what a breath of fresh air this is, it's the first time we've had an audit, not just on time, but in December, that I can remember since I've been...
Yes, yes.
And the credit goes to the young lady, right here, she has just made everything so simple, and so easy, and continues to impress, am I not correct? Karen will come in my house and go, "I was gonna get started on this, she's finished it." And, and it's just, that credit goes to you, and, and we appreciate that.
Yeah, I think it was in March, maybe, we, we, when we were, when we were, uh, engaged, we came back and basically did a couple odds to get everybody caught up, Jen, Jen came in and was hired, and now, um, when, when we do the presentation before the required due date, which is 12/31 for you guys to Treasury, we, we don't, we wait to send it, just because we wait to the board meeting, and so that's either been sent this afternoon, or will be sent to Treasury, which is very easily on time, and we've been finalized since, since November, so.
So, so prior to Jen coming in, we had a change in the Treasurer's office, and, and this board had to hire Plant Moran to help...
Yep.
...get everything cleaned up, this young lady walks in, and she comes in my office and went in, and she says, "Do we hire Plant Moran all the time, cause I can do that stuff?" And I said, "Well, you had to have a baby, so we didn't have you here." But, no baby this year, so look how quick it got done, so, and, and the little gal comes in and even helps sometimes.
Always uses free labor.
Yep, so, um, no, we appreciate you, and we appreciate you, and, and I hope the residents understand what a blessing you've been, uh, for us to have, so. Any other questions for?
Nope.
Nope, alright.
Appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. Alright, so we will move on to reports, uh, trustees, I will start with Mr. Ruth this time.
Nothing at all.
And Mr. Burton?
Okay, the only thing I wanna say is, uh, big thank you, I, before, I think it was about 5:20 this evening, when I got the Township Office Hours sent my email through GovDelivery, so, whoever's doing that's doing a great job.
She's right over there.
Well, good job, very good, even put graphics on there, made it look pretty and everything.
Took me a long time to figure it out, but now I've got it.
Good job, yep, yeah, very good, thank you.
Okay, clerk?
Uh, the, uh, applications...
I know, cat, I, people called me and said that they want, want us to work on the volume for the meetings.
Okay, the primary election, absent voter ballot applications will go out after the first of the year, that, the election date is February 27th, and that's it.
Okay, and the Treasurer?
Well, it's, it's winter tax time, so we're collecting payments, so come in, pay your winter taxes, um, you can also come in to start buying your 2024 dog licenses, you have till June to get that, but they're available now, um, as mentioned, the holiday hours are posted, so we'll, between Christmas and New Year's, we're gonna be open on that Wednesday and that Thursday, and then, and you can also pay your taxes at the state bank, um, and then just in general, we're working on training and procedures and things like that.
Okay, and then, uh, it comes to me, if you've driven on North Holly Road, you can see that they're working out in the roof of the barn. I just drew a blank, what was the other thing I was gonna report on? Oh, the assessing, so, we, we still don't have the assessing contract in front of us, there are seven townships that have been working with the county on getting that contract into a position that we like, if you don't remember, uh, I got the new contract for the assessing in the office, and it went from seven pages or eight pages to 13, that was a red flag, we started going through it, the biggest, um, the biggest issue was that the county wanted, in that contract, we were, the board, if we had voted to approve it, we would have given the county the final say at our Board of Review, and if the resident appealed that, then the township would be responsible to hire the attorney to defend the county. That was a huge problem, because I can't get anybody to hire an attorney to defend me, nor can you, so that was a big red flag, um, and then there were some other things that were kind of power situations, where we, they were wanting us to give them, uh, resolute power, so, um, fortunately, the larger townships, Orion Township, Commerce Township, um, and Oxford, they've been leading the charge on this, there's a group of seven of us, two townships, Rose Township, um, had already approved it, and apparently didn't read it, um, and, and another township, I don't wanna speak, I don't wanna get this wrong, another township, um, approved it for only a couple of months while they worked at getting it fixed, but everybody's been kind of in a hold pattern, and I know we've got the county's attention, because I got a phone call this week from Hillary Chambers, which is the deputy executive, asking me what I thought and how we liked it, and it's the new one, is coming out, um, so they are paying attention, they are listening to us, and that's being worked on, so maybe in January, we'll have it on the agenda, by then, we'll have to see how it goes, once we get the final, we'll turn it over to the attorney and see what she says, and we'll go from there. That will take us into public comment?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How many times in the past have we had to hire attorneys to defend the county?
Never.
A lot?
No.
None, so that wasn't an issue?
The regime change at the county...
Right.
...when Brooks passed, um, the Democrats had not been in position of running the county for many years, and...
So that's why they changed, that's why they changed it?
Well, it changed when, because, so prior to Brooks' death, the county commissioners, there were 21, and the Republicans had been in charge of it for 30-plus years, the election before Brooks died, it went 11 Democrat and 10 Republican, so when Brooks died, the new deputy became Democrat, and, and the Democratic, um, Board of Commissioners was in charge of running the county, and, as you can imagine, when they've not been...
Yeah.
...in that position, there's been some bumps along, and there's been a lot of changes that, you know, they came out and said, "We're gonna make," and they are, um, this just happened to be one, and like I said, typically, when it came in, it was kind of boilerplate, and it's the same thing we've done every year, but when I got the new contract in, I sat there and went, "Whoa."
Went from seven to 13, doubled.
What, what's going on, so we started going page by page, and went... But the biggest one was that they wanted us to give them sole authority for the Board of Review, and in the event that it went to court, we were supposed to hire and pay for the attorney, and that just was immediate red flag, and that same day I read it, I sent a text to Chris Barnett, he's the president of the Oakland County Association of Township Supervisors, and I said, "Have you seen this?", and he said, "Jack Curtis is on my other line," and he's, and he has seen the same thing, and from there, it kind of blew up, and we've been working on it, so.
And, okay, we're currently covered till the end of this year, though, right? Or is it, okay, oh, we're not?
No, that, that would have been for this whole year, right? So we're halfway into the year without a contract.
Oh, I thought the contract was for...
Wasn't for 2023?
They sent us a contract after the year begins, they didn't get, we didn't get the contract till, like, we got it after July.
I'd have to look, believe it.
I think it's a contract a calendar year, not our calendar year.
Okay.
I, I think it's like for the '24 tax season versus...
It could be.
I think it goes on a different calendar.
Well, well, I guess, to answer my question, there's no negative implications of not having one in place, really? Okay.
No. Okay, so, now, we will go to public comment, on agenda items only, members of the public can address the board on agenda items only, once recognized by the supervisor, comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes, the board may extend this time by a majority. Prior to addressing the board, members of the public shall state their name and address for the record, a second public comment is available after new business for all other comments, thank you for your cooperation, is there anyone for public comment? Going once, twice? Okay, we have no old business, we will go into the new business, and the first item on the agenda is the approval of the audit that was just presented, chair would entertain a motion?
I move to approve the audit.
I was waiting for you.
Support? Oh, go ahead, give it to Steve.
Motion by Treasurer Ryan, and support by Trustee Ruth. I'll go ahead and get a roll call.
Winchester?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Burton?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Collins?
Very happily, yes. So the motion passes, five zero. Now, number two on the agenda is Hauser Road litigation, I will turn that over to the Code Enforcement Officer, Amy Hillman.
So when I was here in August, I, we were speaking mostly about the signs ordinance and other gentleman that had been set up on Grange Hall Road, and I also had stated that I was gonna be coming back to you periodically for an update, and to address some of the, um, more intense code enforcement issues that, uh, the township faces, so what I've included in your packet for you today is an ongoing issue that we are facing on Hauser Road, um, as you can see from what I've put together, um, and, as well as, you know, some of the aerials and such, this has been an ongoing issue that does not seem like it's going to resolve itself through, um, some municipal infractions through the 52nd District Court, or through a remediation plan between the Code Enforcement Office and the, uh, property owner, so this one is a little bit more complicated, because we have a couple of things going on, um, I started, uh, code enforcement on this for, specifically for blight, and since then, it has kind of spiraled out of control, um, initially, the gentleman that is in charge of this family farm, um, had entered the office, had come to, uh, me with a plan for the parcel, had addressed and discussed at length some of the issues that we were having, and at that point, we had just some blight vehicles, some small amounts of, you know, accumulated blight, um, and he did move those things around for me, however, he, he also started to bring to the property. The municipal civil infraction that we had taken and requested a hearing at the 52nd District Court did go before Judge Costin, um, we were able to get a judgment and a fine on that, however, that is a fine of $175. During that court hearing, the gentleman provided a new address, because what's happening is, is all of the certified letters and any letters, and even, you know, I'm, I'm out there staking, uh, on the property, are either returned or being ignored, so he had provided a, an address to the court, as well as our attorney, Lisa Hamame, that actually is not a, an address that exists, so, those mailings are also returned, and again, any postings on the property have been unsuccessful in far, as far as, um, creating a communication between the Code Enforcement Office and the, the property owner, um, what is happening now, and you can see from the aerials, is that we have, um, kind of a myriad of issues, and, being that we are unable to communicate with the property owner, I believe that, in order to address the blight violation, which is Article 3, Section 1071, accessory buildings and uses, Section 32 dash 134, fences, walls, and screens, Section 32 dash 138, Article 2 for noise, and Article 3 for disturbing the peace, I would like, I'm coming to the board for the approval of it, of the expense of allowing our attorney to move forward with circuit court litigation. My reasoning there is, being that we are unable to make contact and communicate and do proper mailings, and it seems that our, even staking on the property is coming, you know, is unmet, um, it seems that, in order to show an urgency for these things, that we're gonna have to take it to the next level, so I could continue to, to file municipal civil infraction, we could continue to tick it each day for some of these, because some of these don't have a clear delineation of how code enforcement would go about enforcing, so that is also an issue, but, we are going to... to spend an even larger amount of money with our attorney attending hearings at the 52nd than I believe we would putting all of these things into one litigation. The property owner is unreceptive at this point. The surrounding properties are actively complaining. And it seems to the Code Enforcement Office, as well as the neighboring properties, that there is a clear intent of disturbance and creating even more of a violation. So as you can see, instead of taking care of the blight, instead of removing the blight and doing what we've asked, removing the accessory structure within the consumer's easement, removing the shipping container that is not allowed within the accessory buildings and uses, instead of removing the blight vehicles and the outdoor storage of, and I didn't even include that one, I did overlook that one, the outdoor storage of recreational vehicles in the form of a boat and multiple trailers. We also have issues with Eagle, which I cannot enforce, for the, for the digging within a regulated wetland, as well as Consumers Energy for the building within their easement. So I believe that this is our best route to, to be able to bring this property into compliance. If we, if we don't address it now, I know that, you know, there's the, this time of year is considered to be sacred. However, our, our jobs don't stop, right? So government doesn't stop, unfortunately. And with Lisa Hamame's medical issues for those first couple of months with the fall, and being able to kind of get to the point where, point where we felt that we are now needing to take the next step, we are here in December. I'm not exactly sure as to how much we believe that the litigation will cost. I do believe that we are going to incur some issues as far as communication and getting everybody to the table to remediate these violations. And that is why I'm coming to you. I am unsuccessful in my pursuits. So I am looking to the board to give me instruction or to approve the, the funds for litigation to allow Lisa to take this to the next level for a judgment that would allow us to enter onto the property to remediate ourselves if it, if it did come to that, that, that state.
Didn't this go to a higher level, too, that has been contacting you, like the state rep, or?
So I had addressed this, the issue of not having any response or engagement with Eagle, with Representative Mueller. I believe that the, the confusion there is that one of my complainants shares a name with a former House rep. So I think that that's where the confusion with that lies. I had also reached out to our community liaison through Consumers, and that, that has also been met with, you know, I, I'll get with them, I'll get with them. So and George has even went as far as using some of his contacts, and we're still, I mean, I understand that we have entities all over that are understaffed. I think that Eagle is obviously one of them, Consumers Energy, I'm assuming, is also one of them. Again, those are issues that I am not going to be able to enforce within our code of ordinances. But it kind of shows you the level of disconcern for the law.
Okay. So I know Lisa has, the attorney, has called me, and she recommended that we take this out of District Court, put it into Circuit Court. Because as she said, Circuit Court has more teeth. And the biggest problem with this case is the lack of communication. You can't find a guy, you can't get him to respond. And the District Court keeps putting it off with hopes that you get in contact with it.
Right.
We've had, the neighbors have stepped up, not only their calls and complaints, but, but some really good photographs.
And video.
To show that he's bringing a lot of this stuff in in the middle of the night.
Mm-hmm.
And they're bringing big trucks in, they're dumping stuff, they've pushed a berm up to the one property owner in, in an attempt so that the property owner can no longer see over to see what's going on in there.
However, as of late, now they're running ATVs in the middle of the night as well.
There was big ten, where there was probably 10-foot fences with it, looks like just big two-by-fours up in the air, and they've stretched landscape material across the black landscape material, almost like it's a compound or something. So, so that we're not able to see and take pictures. But, you know, that's where we're at.
And it is the collective agreement that this is a situation of intimidation as well for the neighboring properties. So I, and, and for myself as well. And I think that we know that I, there's a lot of tough customers that I've been dealing with that have no problem with making me fear for my physical safety. And this happens to be one of them.
The original judgment that was done, what was the what if, you don't do this type thing?
So that was, that was in respect to the blight itself. I, and I had touched base with Lisa regarding that. I did fail to grab that. But that was the $175 fine.
Right.
So what it is, is they, they, they give you a fine, and they expect you to remove the vehicle. However, again, we can't move forward with that because we didn't get a judgment that allows us to enter the property. But we can't move forward with that because there's no communication. So we've not been able to get back in front of the judge for that. At least I would have better answers as to how the, those next steps.
Did the property owner pay the 175?
No. And I did speak with the court. He has not provided a new address. And I have, at length, tried to find online. The title search is a 26-page document in which it shows a very lengthy change of hands between a trust, Oakland County, back to the trust, and then to this new family farm structure, which has led to the same address that has not been changed here on Oakland Street in Holly. So everything that has gone there has come back, the certified letters, snail mail letters. And then again, you know, I, I do see that my, my postings at the property have been removed. However, there's been no communication.
And, and the most, it's important to note, the most recent address he gave literally doesn't exist.
Yes.
It isn't, that he isn't responding. That address just doesn't exist. So.
So is there like a, when I was reading through this, it almost looks like there's a caretaker almost?
So I, I believe the structure is one where there is like a caretaker. I'm not exactly sure of that. I couldn't find much documentation of that. It was formally in a trust where there was a family out of Belleville that was in charge. I believe that that family is still in play. However, it has now changed hands and at least entity names with this individual being named specifically. And he is the only one that has, has come to the office, and the only one that has actually showed in any of the court hearings.
There is no house on the property.
There is not. There is, this is a vacant parcel. And then you have a parcel to the west of it that has a home very close to the property line. And like I was saying, too, is that, you know, they've now started running ATVs in the middle of the night right along the property line. So it's become, you know, more and more aggressive as the time goes on. And I know that on one side, that we have a, a very, you know, engaged complainant. And on the other, we have one that I believe fears intimidation and wants, you know, absolutely nothing to do with the complainant, and actually does not allow me to even enter the driveway for documentation at this point now. So I am limited to inspection from the, from the road. And then, as you can see, there are black, 100%, you know, zero visibility materials that have been put together as a fence. And due to that, and as well as some other things that have happened within the office, I do not feel safe posting at this property any longer.
Any other questions from the board?
Okay. So we don't know how much this will, the attorneys will charge?
Correct.
Which we typically don't in any
Right. But it could be thou, tens of thousands then.
No.
It's typically in the 5,000 to 10,000 range.
Can we put a rank, can we put a limit on it?
How do you stop litigation? Once you start?
And we're talking about quality of life here. So when we're, you know, we have taxpayers surrounding this property, and I, they're, they're, they're asking us to move forward in any way that we can. So I, I feel that it is imperative that we go to those lengths. I, I mean, that we have these on the books for a reason. We have the ability to go to Circuit Court for a reason. And I think this is definitely one of those reasons. I, you can look back at my career, I have not taken these requests lightly. And I try to go to, you know, my, I do my due diligence and to give you as much as I can before we get to this point. I, I tried my very best.
In most of these cases, when they come to us like this, we've been working out for a couple of years.
Right.
We've been out, we've tried
This one since 2021.
Yeah. We've tried this, we've tried that. Then we've thought, well, let's try this. We've gone out. Yeah, we, we try to do our damnedest to not go to court.
Right.
And really, I mean, you know, at any given time, I probably have three to four dozen cases going on. And most of them, you know, I would say 98% of them don't get to this point. But I do have some that don't allow it.
And the most recent activity was just, what, two weeks ago? That was when they were bringing the truckloads in at night?
They are doing that. They're, they're, they're shooting on the property. They are running ATVs on the property. They are, you know, storing on the property. They are bringing, they're, they're digging out the, you know, they're moving earth. They're bringing in crushed concrete. There, there's a lot of activity on this property.
Yeah. And you can't bite that in Circuit, or in District Court, because you're going to spend more money than you would in litigation, going to District Court and
Over and over and over again.
Get consistent.
And that's why Lisa called.
And then for it to even stick. I mean, what's 175 dollars?
I think that this is not only the, you know, the, the fiscally responsible choice, but, you know, as far as the, the health, safety, and welfare of our community, this is the best choice.
I would move to approve litigation for Hauser Road.
Motion by Winchester, support by Trustee Burton. Any further discussion? None appearing? Can I have a roll call, please?
Ryan?
Yes.
Burton?
Yes.
Ruth?
No.
Was that a no?
That's a no.
Thank you.
Cullis?
Yes.
Winchester?
Yes.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Thank you. I will be happy to keep the board updated on this.
Motion carries 4 to 1.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, two Planning Commission members, terms ending 1231 of 26. That is Mr. McCanney and Mr. Mitchell. I can put Mr. McCanney's name up for the Planning Commission. I need to table Mr. Mitchell's till next month. I don't have an answer from him yet. Does that cause a problem?
We can appoint him and
Can I appoint him? And, well, do you want me to do that? Make the appointment? And then if he changes his mind, then we change the appointment?
Yeah.
Okay. So let's do them individually. I'll start with Mr. McCanney first. Make a motion that we put Mr. McCanney, or keep Mr. McCanney on the Planning Commission.
Support.
So motion by Cullis, support by Burton. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Now I will do Mr. Mitchell. Motion to continue Mr. Mitchell on the Planning Commission.
Support.
Support by Mr. Burton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion car, opposed? Motion carries. Now, that takes care of that one. Then the next one is members on the Board of Appeals. And I have Pam Masick, I have Josh Murphy, and in place of Tim Turpinning, I am going to enter William DeSessa. He is here this evening. If the board has not met Mr. Bill, he's right back here. Bill, you want to come to the microphone and just give him a little background on who you are and who you work for?
Good evening, board. Happy to be here. Bill DeSessa, worked for the State Department of Education. Proud to retire from there in six months to a year, but been there for many years now, working in Lansing, and I enjoy that. I basically am in mutual relations there for the Department of Education. Lived in Holly for many years now. Son came up from Holly Schools and enjoyed living here on the Planning Commission and also Historic District Commission.
For the village.
For the village, yes.
You need to make that clarification.
Yes. Excuse me. Thank you, George. And I've been on those, both those panels for many years now. Enjoy doing it. I pride myself in trying to come to the meetings. I rarely miss a meeting. During COVID, a couple of times, I did it online. So, you know, my wife was at the airport, whatever, but I actually brought my laptop down to Metro Airport and and tried to attend those meetings remotely, which at that time was possible, by the way. It was not a violation of the Open Meetings Act or anything like that. But I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. I'm proud to serve on the board, if you'll have me.
And, and just to make it clear, Mr. Turpinning has served well. The only reason I'm replacing him is unfortunately, he had a stroke, and he's dealing with some, well, recuperation, but that's not the word I wanted.
Shoot, healing.
Well, yeah, but when you have to, anyway. All right, doggone it. I don't like it when those words leave me. But anyway, so those are the three names. Thank you, Bill.
Yes.
I will start with Pam Masick, and a motion to appoint her.
Support.
Support by Mr. Burton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then I will go to Josh Murphy, and make a motion to appoint him.
Support.
Support again by Mr. Burton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then I will entertain a motion for Mr. DeSessa. I will let the board take this one. Pardon?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve William DeSessa to the zoning Board of Appeals, terminating 123126.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Treasurer Ryan. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I handled that one differently because it was a new name, and I wanted more board input. Thank you for that. Then I have the Board of Review. The first one is the regular member. As you remember, Nancy Rebar was our alternate. She stepped up to the full-time board member, as Pam Krantz has had some medical issues. Nancy Rebar, I'm going to appoint her again to continue on the Board of Review. So I will make a motion to do so. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Burton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, number six is the alternate, which is Pam Krantz. Same story as before. I will make a motion to appoint her. Motion by Cullis. Is there support?
Support.
Mr. Burton again. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. That comes down to number seven. The three construction board members for the Board of Construction Appeal. The first name is Stuart Hopper. He is the name that I brought up back in December, which, which filled the, or not December, but November, to fill the end of that term because Doug Henderson had passed. But now I would appoint Scott Hopper for a three-year term. Motion by But now I would appoint Scott Hopper for a three-year term. Motion by Callis.
Support.
Support by Burton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The second name on that committee is Brad Stillwell. He's been a member and builder in this community for many years. I would like to reappoint him. Motion by Callis. Support.
Support.
By Burton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the third name is Zach Morris. Zach Morris is the builder that just completed about a year ago, the rehab of the building between Red Devil and Bob Hoffman's building right there on Maple Street. The alterations was in the main floor and he put the third story on and did all the apartments there. He's also on the board of review and I'd like to reappoint him. So that's motion by Callis. Is there support?
Support.
And support by Burton. Any discussion on that one? None? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. That takes me down to the township board planning commissioner liaison resignation. Mr. Burton came to me and he would, he wanted to move from the planning commission to the Hyatt. And that's doable?
Well, and that's what I'm waiting to see. This coming month in January, they will be meeting and discussing meeting dates and a change of those.
Okay.
Because as of right now, they are literally on the only day of the month I cannot do.
Okay.
It's always the first Thursday at 3:30 or something like that.
Right. And they are going to bring forward a change of day.
Oh.
Yeah.
And also.
I talked to Tina, she's hoping to move that.
Yeah. And I, you know, and there were some other positives, obviously. I didn't want to doing it just so I could be on there. But I guess another positive is the clinical staff or the, the social workers or, you know, the behavioral counselors or whatever there. They are unable to be there on the first Thursdays as well. Because I guess they're shared with other organizations. So that, that was an opportunity to have them there as well.
Okay.
And just to, to speak more to this, you know, obviously I'm not doing this for reasons of not wanting, you know, or anything that's been going on with the planning commission. It's just not really an interest of mine and Hyatt is much more an interest of mine.
Right. No. So we need a motion to accept the resignation.
So moved.
Okay. With support by Callis. I was going to make the motion, but you jumped in there. So I'll flip it that way.
Okay.
Already had the letters written down. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Now, appointments, one township board planning commissioner liaison member. I've talked to some other communities and there are some other supervisors that serve on the planning commission. I know you had a concern there.
Yeah, I think it's a terrible idea. I think it undermines the, the chair and, I mean, I just think it, you're the chief executive officer and you have a planning commissioner that would have to serve with you on the board. I just, yeah, I, I think it's not a good idea. I'd like to see maybe Steve go back on.
Steve?
I can do that on the planning board commission, but when is this meeting being changed to?
For Hyatt?
Yeah. Is it okay for you?
Well, that's what.
You're going to wait to see.
Right. January.
Well, we just approved the positions open.
Yeah. So it, it can wait. You don't have to be on Hyatt too.
That's true.
Yeah, you can be absent. Yeah.
Until it's.
Right. And I mean, worst case scenario is that I would be able to do virtual for about, and maybe 45 minutes prior to my meeting. I have to actually attend for my job. I obviously couldn't vote for Open Meetings Act, but, you know, I can come provide updates and then the decisions that we make as a group, I can, you know, obviously give the information for that as well. So. Although I may not be present in person, I think there's an opportunity for me to still attend, bring us back the information.
Well, it sounded, it sounded to me with the conversation I had with Tina that she was pretty sure she was going to be able to move it.
Okay.
She just wasn't sure where. But for you, the only day.
One day. Yeah.
That was the problem was the current day.
Correct. Yep.
Ah.
And I'm fine with the time and everything else. So.
Good. So I'm fine too.
Okay. You, so you accept the nomination?
For planning board? Yes.
Yeah. So it's nomination by Winchester. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That takes care of number nine. We go to number 10, which is the Holly Area Youth Assistant Contract. Karen?
This is just our annual contract for our contribution to the youth assistance for the 2625.
And that's the same amount as last year?
Mm-hmm.
So they never asked?
Same contract, nothing's changed.
Okay.
It's an annual.
Yeah.
It's a little late. I can't, I usually try to do that in July, but it got away from me this year.
I will say this and, and Mr. Burton, take note. This is the amount that was determined, I don't know how many years ago.
Oh, years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we've had that discussion in the meeting and I don't understand why they haven't moved forward. Because Hyatt has, it's interesting. If you hear Hyatt read the balance of their, their treasury, it sounds like they have a lot of money. The problem they have is a big chunk of it is part of the, and, and those of you that have been in Holly longer than me, the two teachers that are part of the Jacobson Quinn, the toy fund.
Yep.
That's a big part of their salary. The, or not salary, but their treasury. The other part of what they have is the money that gets appropriated and it has those federal earmarks on who they can use it, the age wise. This money here is for their actual operating expenses. And when I was on the board, and Steve, you might remember, I told them, I said, you need to delineate between the differences. Take a look at what your costs are. None of the townships are going to raise what they give you without you coming to us and substantiate.
Yeah, I've told them that too.
Well, and the problem is.
They need to show it.
The, the one day I brought that up and they said, well, Rose Township gave us a raise. I, I said, we're not Rose Township. I'm just here to tell you that until you come to my board and say, my operating expenses are $10,000, or $20,000, you divide it by four townships or five communities, whatever it is we have. And everybody's share would be instead of 26 something would be 4,000. Or, and I'm using that as an example. But all I'm saying is until you do that, I can't take it to my board. So I'm letting you know that when you're there at Hyatt and they, and they start looking at the budget, get these numbers in line because we're going to keep giving them that every year until they come to us and substantiate why they need more.
Yeah.
The fact that one community just decided to give them a gift and give them more, that's their business. That's not how we operate here. So I just wanted you to be aware. I know Steve was there when I made that conversation with him. And unfortunately, we're back here. I can't give them more because they haven't given me any reason to do so.
Yeah.
So, just so you're aware.
Well, as my first unofficial item dealing with Hyatt, other than them sponsoring my son's T-ball team two years ago, I'll make a motion to approve the 2023, 2024 Holly Area Youth Assistance Contract.
Okay. Motion by trustee Burton. Support?
Support.
Support by Treasurer Ryan. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Burton?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Winchester?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Callis?
Yes. Motion carries. Five zero. Okay. Now we go to Holly Township Code of Ordinance Amendment, adding chapter eight, building and building regulations, and add article six licenses. Karen Winchester?
This is being brought to the board because we're getting to that point now that, that I feel that it's necessary. Most of the reasoning is we are getting businesses in our retail that don't belong in those zoning districts. That would present, it's for every three years. So it's not any, any real intrusive. But that, they would have to register with the township. That gives us the opportunity to let them know that they can't be in that district instead of now having a code enforcement issue. In addition, we're finding that the, these businesses are going in and they're doing renovations to the interior of the buildings that are safety issues, like taking out the ceilings. There's certain things that they're doing and we don't have any ability to go in and, and see them when they make those changes or when a renter changes hands. So I just think it's time, get this in place as we grow and, that's it. And it would be all, we're, we're going to do it every three years. We're going to keep it on, keep them on a cycle. So if they come in and they, in a year and a half into the cycle, they'll be prorated. They, they'll just pay the, the proration of the, the fee. And then it'll be the building department as well as the fire department will do inspections.
Okay. So they will have to bring a plan of what they're going to do and tell you how they're going to renovate?
Yes. Well, they always do for the building department anyway, but before they can occupy, they need a business license to occupy. We do the inspection and if they have to put up any signage or, or those kinds of things. If they want to make changes, then they would go through the building department. But we would know about those where we wouldn't be knowing about them typically. We don't.
To, it's difficult to enforce when you don't have the licensing position.
And we've had a couple recently and, and this will help us go forward. So those things don't happen and we don't get people in the wrong zoning district.
I was going to say it offers clarification for both parties.
Yes, it does. And it's been reviewed by the attorney as well.
You going to follow that up with a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the Holly Township Code of Ordinance Amendment, adding chapter eight, building and building regulations, adding article six licenses.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by trustee Ruth. Any further discussion?
Just to let you know, we, so we're going to start January, the first part of January, letters will go out to all of the business owners.
It'll take effect tonight once we've passed it.
After it's published. So within a week or so.
Okay.
And that's it.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ruth?
Yes.
Winchester?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Burton?
Yes.
Callis?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Now, the last thing is the final piece of paper in your packet. It's resolution 202326, Building Fee Schedule. There's only one change on it and it's the business license, building, fire, zoning. This is in conjunction to with what we just passed.
Correct.
Yep.
And it puts a fee in there of $150. And those fees aren't just decided arbitrarily. We go based on other communities and.
And what our, what it actually costs are. Right. So I would move to approve Building Permit Fee Schedule Amendments, proposed resolution 2023-26.
Support.
Motion by Winchester, support by Burton. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Winchester?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Burton?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Callis?
Yes. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
So even though that looked like a long agenda, we did a pretty good job getting through all that.
Yeah, really.
That will take us, that would, that's not very often we turn the page over.
I know.
Wait a minute. You didn't give me any word on it.
Second public comment.
It's on the back.
Oh, just the last public comment. Two words up there.
Yeah.
And depending on where you have your hand when you turn it over, I didn't even see it. So the last public comment, which is on any items.
Hannah Matson, 15091, Western Valley.
Get the microphone.
I'm loud enough. I'm sure.
Well, I've had people complaining about the recording at home. It's not picking up.
They always hear me.
Okay.
Just some food for thought for the board. I thought it would be a good idea to create a new board, maybe a community development board made up citizens and, you know, some trustee liaisons and stuff. Just with the new build and the new office and with the farm set, I think it would be great to have a board that meets regularly to, you know, I almost envision everyone has like an elected official at the state and federal level or just eyes on certain grants because I always try to keep an eye out for grants for other community center and they're everywhere. So there's state, there's county and there's federal grants. So be able, being able to have a board where you can say, okay, you're going to keep an eye on like county grants and stuff like that. And then we can meet regularly and see, um, see what actions to take or, you know, how we want to develop the community. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else for public comment? None appearing? Any further remarks from the board? Mr. Burton?
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
I will close the meeting at 7:37.